Hello, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, June 11th for Education Business Meetings. Order at 6:09 PM. If everybody please stand to the left.
The United States of America is a republic for which it stands, one nation, one government, and a free, democratic, and justiciable democracy.
Jonathan Thurber.
Here.
Michelle Byssler. David Clipper. Ann Luxford.
Here.
Tisha Kaminsky. Your name is Melanie.
Here.
Erin Novak. Thank you.
Okay, the exits are to your right and to your left, and behind us to the right. Subject 2 dot 1, may I please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or amended? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 3 dot 1, may I please get a motion to approve the minutes of the May 21st, 2024 Business Meeting as presented at this meeting? Erin, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 4 dot 1, Statements and Reports. I'll hand over to Secretary Emily Hatt.
We're going to start this evening with Principal Reports. Principal Connolly.
Well, good evening. It is very hard to believe that the 23-24 school year is coming so quickly, and with that, there are lots of end-of-year events and celebrations. Last Tuesday, in preparation for Moving Up Day, our third graders traveled over here to the middle school to get a tour of the building, meet with members of the Junior National Honor Society to learn about student life as fourth graders. Thanks to these students, Mr. Gillespie and NJHS Advisors, Ms. Chapman and Ms. Rasmason, for taking the time to show our students around and answer all their questions. On Thursday, June 6th, our Elementary Drama Club presented their production of Zombies the Musical to all grade levels during the day and held an evening performance for cast and families and to the community. This adorable play crept into the dreams of a boy who watches too many scary TV shows. The zombies teach him about understanding and appreciating differences in ourselves and others. Thanks, big thanks to the club advisors, Ally and Emily Craven, for the months of before and after-school rehearsals and all of their coaching and choreography skills that led to the play being such a big hit. Another creative show featuring elementary students was the GWL Centennial Jasper Cropsby Inspired Art Show, held at the Teen Center under Miss Emsworth's direction. Students learned about this famous local painter of landscapes and then created their very own artistic expressions reminiscent of his stylings. Last Friday, June 7th, our whole school traveled to the Town Beach Waterfront Pavilion to take our annual panoramic photo and enjoy the beauty of our community, while we enjoyed lunch with many of our parents who came by to meet up with us for a picnic on the Great Lawn area. Just today, our third graders are returning home from their hallmark trip to the Bronx Zoo. I was with them for most of the day, and students were fully enjoying their all-access passes to the variety of habitats and special exhibits that are currently on display. This Thursday, we'll hold our ES Spring Concert, with K-1 performing at 12:30 and Grades 2-3 taking the stage at 1:45. And then it's on to our Olympic-themed Field Day Friday, which will be held at Lines and Francis Fields with a barbecue luncheon under the Elks Pavilion. Our last ES event of the year will be our third grade moving up next Thursday, June 20th, at 10:30 AM. And then it will be tied to welcome-in summer vacation and encourage our students to continue reading and writing and logging adventures with their very own traveling Teddy program that I'll share when I discuss with Yan Emsworth, as she's key to that program. And with that, that is my last ever word of bed. The staff, the board, the administrators, for everything you've done to make me feel welcome and supported all these years of here. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Gillespie?
Okay, we have also been busy here at the middle school since that time of year. So, since our last board meeting, we've had quite a few events, as you can see up on the slides. One of them was our spring concert for our 4th and 5th grade and 6th or 8th grade band and chorus students. That was a wonderful night. We had a great turnout by the families coming out to support their students. It was also wonderful to see the progress the students have made throughout the year. And even in the short time that I've been here since January, I've been able to see those programs and those students grow from practice to their performances that night. So, that is a tribute to our staff members involved in those programs, and I would like to thank them for all their efforts in preparing our students throughout the year. So, that includes Mr. Compton, Mr. Poe, who is here this evening, and of course, Mrs. Croll, who will be recognizing this evening for so many great years of service to Greenwood Lake. So, thank you again to all of our music educators for putting together such a great performance for our spring concert. On May 31st, we had our semi-formal dance, it's in 2024 there. I know there's some shadows in that photo, but it was a great photo, so I included it. But the students definitely came out dressed to impress that night for their 7th and 8th grade semi-formal dance. Thank you to Mrs. Chapman, Ms. Casaldo, for all the work they put into organizing that event for our students, and also to all of our staff members who came out to support that night and to chaperone and be a part of that event. Also, if you look to the right, we have Mental Health Awareness Month, it was May. So, May was Mental Health Awareness Month. Our peer leadership group was involved in working on some activities to support raising awareness to that topic. And the two individuals you see in that photo need no introduction, Mrs. Greenberg and Mr. C. And I would like to emphasize, I can't emphasize enough how much those two individuals do working with our students on a variety of topics, but certainly on the topic of mental health as well. So, that board with the positive messages is right here behind me, if anyone wants to take a look at that this evening, maybe on the way out. So, again, thank you to Mrs. C., Mrs. Greenberg, and peer leadership students for putting that together. Also, NJHS and Student Government, the combined trip to Legoland. That was, again, that was a trip that was in question due to the forecast, but we went for it, and they had a fun day. Again, thank you to those teachers that are involved in that, Mrs. Chapman, Ms. Rasmason, and Mrs. Shepherd, for all the work with NJHS and Student Government throughout the year. And it was nice to let them have a kind of a culminating event to have some fun and go on that trip. And then, the other photo you see is our athletic awards. So, last week, we had our athletic awards ceremony, again, a very, very good turnout by our families to come support our student athletes. It was a great recognition for all those students for both fall, winter, and spring seasons. And thank you to all of our coaches who spoke on their behalf. Being an athlete, it takes a lot to put in the hours, travel to games, travel to contests, come back, and then get your homework done late at night and early morning to make sure that you're staying on track. And our coaches put in a tremendous amount of extra work to prepare the athletes and also to just game plan. So, I thank them again for everything they did to support those students. So, that was for all of our modified athletes, including our athletes that participated in Warwick Athletics at both the modified and high school level. So, again, another great event to celebrate our students as we wind down the current school year. Now onto something that's not as fun, testing. Testing began last week. We kicked that off with the Algebra of Regions last Tuesday, and we are now in full swing with 7th and 8th grade final exams today. Our students had a full day of exams, and that will continue as we proceed through this week. Also, some of the upcoming events that are coming. We have our 8th grade picnic, which is scheduled for June 17th. On June 18th, we will have our Honorable Breakfast from 8:00 to 8:30 here, recognizing those students who made a high honor roll or honor roll for all three quarters. And also, immediately following the Honorable Breakfast, we will have our middle school academic awards beginning at 9:00 AM to recognize all students that have been chosen to receive an academic award for their progress during the current school year. Field Day for Grades 4 through 8 will take place on June 20th, and of course, we will round everything out with the 8th grade graduation on Friday, June 21st, at 6:30 PM here at the middle school. We will be outdoors, hoping for good weather and an opportunity to celebrate those students that have been a part of our Greenwood Lake School Community all the way up until that point in 8th grade. So, we're looking forward to that. We will also be mailing out our report cards at that time. And that's it for my report.
Thank you. Two things before I move on to the retirees that I just wanted to report on. One is that the Centennial Tea Party is coming up on June 15th at 3:00 PM at the Church of Good Shepherd. If anybody wants to attend that, I was asked to speak about that. And also, just so everyone knows, that we had a very successful fundraiser last night for the families displaced by the storms. We raised almost $10,000 to give to them. So, we are very excited about that, and we'll be working with the families to support them in the upcoming days as they move forward after the storm. We do have two retirements to recognize. I have Diane Connolly, our elementary principal, and Laura Poe, our music teacher, as well as Jim McQuire, a custodian who is here. So, three retirees. So, Jim McQuire is over here with us. Was a valued member of the custodial unit for 16 years. He worked custodial maintenance, he kept our buildings running, he was the groundskeeper for many years, doing the lines for our sports fields and making sure that everything was trimmed and proper. He must always was the first one here on any day, opening the school and preparing every staff and students. And I'm sure we would just like to say thank you to him for his dedication that he showed over the years to ensure that the buildings and grounds are always painted comfortably. I know that in his retirement, he's going to enjoy a bunch of happiness, as he has a new brainchild. And although he's not waking up for our children anymore, he is now waking up for a baby waking up for his grandchildren. So, congratulations on your retirement. So, I had fun looking for pictures for these slides here. So, Mrs. Connolly, there were plenty of pictures of me in funny costumes and things, but the one of you being old is one of my favorites as a woman to retirement, and then, of course, the ones with kids. And I love that in this one, you can't even really, you have to take a minute to find where you are, just because you're right there along with the kids. So, just a quick statement on Diane Connolly. Diane Connolly is retiring after a very full career teaching and leading in Warwick, and then making leap over to the principalship and degree in the lake six years ago. When we hired her, the references voted for passion for teaching, for quiet way of leading, her love of children, and for advocacy for what's best for students. And over her time with us, I have found every single one of those statements to be true. Her knowledge and leadership style perfectly matched the needs of the elementary school. I found Diane to be intentional. She looked for the why behind every situation faced and made sure she had reasons when answering those challenges with decisions. She was a planner. Diane was often three or four steps ahead of wherever we were. We would sit at admin meetings in January, and she would want to talk about the third grade moving up soon. She was curious. I joked at her tenure speech about the number of questions she asked in her first four years with us. We had a run joke at admin about how many questions Diane would have written down in her notebook. Her questions showed commitment, caring, concern, plans and alternatives to plans, sometimes a third alternative if the thirsty plans didn't work out. Teasing aside, these questions were always insightful, and she never asked the same question twice. She took what she learned and applied it forward. She was thoughtful. I mean this word in its purest sense. Diane is always thinking. In the small moments and the big ones, she considers all aspects and pays attention to small details that others might miss. She cares deeply about the people, both the adults and the children she interacts with on a daily basis. She has a way of looking at you and seeing the person is inside. The truth is that we could go on and on about Diane and how she has shaped not just her school, but the district as a whole. She has a true sense of what it means to be part of a team as an expert at built-in capacity. The environment at the elementary school is what it is today because of her kindness, listening ability, supportive action, and people's skills. One mark of true impact is did you leave the place better than you found it? With Diane, that answer is very easy. She elevated all aspects of the elementary school community. Presence will be remembered and spoken fondly for years to come. Diane, we wish you the very best in your retirement. May your years ahead be full of joy and probably time with those you love most. Congratulations. So, looking for pictures of Mrs. Croll was a little bit tougher, because I have a lot of pictures of the back of her head. So, she is the rare person, so usually when I go into classrooms, I see the teacher's face in the backs of students' heads, but with Mrs. Croll, when you take a picture of her, she's doing her best work, you see the back of her head. So, I got the back, I got a quarter, and then I was able to find one side view of you doing your thing, Laura. And then, of course, we had some pictures with Mr. Red Grammar, right? That's Red Grammar. And then dressed up, because you always work with your special teams, and I know what a special bond you have with your special teams. At the retirement party the other night, I sang. I will not sing this evening, but I will say that Laura's impact on the children of Greenwood Lake is truly immeasurable. She has had the unique role of teaching students from the time they enter kindergarten, and again, every year through 8th grade. That's nine years per student, both the easy kids and the tougher ones. There is not another person in our district that has that much long-term influence on our students' lives. How lucky are the students to have Laura be that influence, someone who so passionately loves what she does and the students she teaches? She built so many relationships over those years. She has been the conductor of a symphony, creating a beautiful melody that lives in the hearts of the children for years to come. One of the most fun things to watch in the elementary concerts, and I think you can see it here, it's hands in her hands, was the use of their hands for the words of the songs. I was told it's real sign language.
It's real sign.
But the children did love making those gestures while singing in their little hearts out. Music education stimulates challenges and enriches our young people during their formative school years, but its value really does last a lifetime. Music itself brings joy to the heart and feeds the soul. Laura was the deliverer of that soul-filling joy for almost 30 years here in Greenwood Lake. It is my hope, Laura, that your retirement brings you as much joy as you gave the district, the students, and your fellow staff members during your years with us. You will be greatly missed by the Greenwood Lake community. I'm going to give you sunshine yellow. At this time, I just want to quickly recognize, we had several, and we're going to be moving to the next agenda items, which is the new tenure recipients, but I do want to take a moment. We did have three people that are with us tonight, I believe both are relatives. Yes. Three individuals that received tenure mid-year that are also here to celebrate and be able to have cakes. We didn't have to cake at their tenure celebrations, we had to invite them back for cake. But we have Lauren Tuie, who was tenured in the physical education, Pam Jennings, I'm sorry, Lauren Tuie, who was tenured as a teaching assistant, Pam Jennings, who was tenured as a teaching assistant, and Terry Verbowski, who was tenured as a physical education teacher, and her softball team went undefeated.
Okay, so, first of all, congratulations to the retirees. Thank you for supporting us for all the years that you did. It's greatly appreciated, not only by the people, but obviously, the senior people here are supporting you, so thank you very much. Okay, so, any updates from WISPA? No?
No, the session just wrapped up, so I think we still have some OXPBA.
Till September, probably?
Yeah, until September.
OXPBA, I think?
The last meeting was last week, so we're done till September.
Facilities, I know the Windows should be in by now, we're just gonna start. They're working on, now my mic's off, they're working on installing those Windows. So, that's good, it will all be installed hopefully by graduation. Audit Committee, we've got the email from Ann, so that's, we're all set with that, so thank you.
Several of yours just came in, they're searching the budget, 20 procedures, blah, 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 back in July.
Policy Committee? Budget is done, thank you. Unity for passing that, much appreciated. Chester High School, not actually, but the June 20th, Tuesday, June 25th is their graduation. The break date is on Wednesday, and on Thursday, the survey, the classes, and enrollment are yet. Thank you. Warwick High School, Diane?
Just a couple of things for graduating seniors, just a few. Friday, June 21st, all Chromebooks, all files, they can be caged, so that the students are able to walk on graduation. That's Friday, June 21st. June 27th is the mandatory 10:00 AM walk-through graduation practice, and June 29th, Saturday morning, 10:00 AM, is the graduation. If, due to the weather, that does happen, or figures across that it doesn't happen, each student will receive five tickets to graduation. All this has been sent to, to be an email, so, you know, if you need to make sure you're checking email, especially we have a senior graduating constantly. Good luck to everyone. Whether you're graduating or not, I'll believe your kids will have a great summer, and tell all the graduates, best of luck in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. So, now we're moving along. Subject 5 dot 1, may I please get a motion to confer tenure upon Brienne Emsworth in the Visual Arts tenure area effective August 31st, 2024? Michelle? Patty? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Hey. Subject 5 dot 2, may I please get a motion to confer tenure upon Austin Praylor in the 7th through 12 English tenure area effective September 1st, 2024? Erin, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations. Subject 5 dot 3, may I please get a motion to confer tenure upon Cynthia Giordano in the elementary tenure area effective August 31st, 2024? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Okay, subject 6 dot 1, may I please get a motion to recess the business meeting for recognition of our tenure staff and retirees? Dave, Erin, any discussion? All in...
We're going to gather for a picture of all of the tenure and retirees quickly.
I'll be right back.
We'll do a quick picture for the tenured and retired, and maybe over 10 years.
All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to one.
And they have one, please have some cake.
And congratulations again to everybody. Oh, wait, hold on, sorry, I guess I get to get us back into this meeting. Subject 6 dot 2, may I please get a motion to start the business meeting back up at 6:53 PM? Mike, I guess I really have the motion. Erin, any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye, seven to one. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to say a few things about Brienne. Brienne came to us with a wealth of knowledge and teaching experience from 19 years as a visual arts teacher in New York City, where she worked with all levels of student populations K through 12. And she gained incredible insight into the needs of diverse communities that she served. And hiring that level of talent would have been a home run in and of itself, but because her family has deeply set roots in the Greenwood Lake community, she also brought a complete understanding of who we are, what makes us special, our values and traditions, and a heart full of Laker pride. This is very evident in everything Brienne does. She genuinely cares about the success and happiness of all of our students and their families, and always steps up to volunteer to help with any school or community project that comes along, and there have been plenty. Brienne has been instrumental in our collaboration with the GWL Centennial Committee in our Veterans Day Tribute, and she has also volunteered for the STEAM Fair, Sweetheart Night, Community Basketball Game. She keeps score for the modified basketball team. She helps out with PTSA events on Bingo Night and the Scholastic Book Fair, and most recently, she played in our storm game just the other night. And she's collaborated with our project lead-the-way teacher Jake Shetman to plan and organize a traveling Teddy program to keep students reading and writing over the summer months. And this collegial teamwork occurs with every single staff member at the elementary school. Everyone loves Brienne's good nature, her welcoming smile, and her lighthearted laugh. She gets along with everyone and is well-respected by all. I believe her passion for her work comes in part from being a parent with Mike and a mother to Brienne, which gives her the perspective of wanting to have the absolute best school experience for children. When asked what her favorite thing about working here, she said, of course, the kids, but also the commitment and involvement shown by the parents, as she really didn't have that when she worked in New York City. She goes above and beyond every single day to make that vision a reality for all of us, and for that, Brienne, we thank you. And it is my absolute... And it is my absolute pleasure to congratulate you on your tenure this evening.
Okay, our next recipient that I'll speak on is Cynthia Giordano. Cynthia came to Greenwood Lake as a seasoned educator, working most of her career in special education, which shows her ability to differentiate instruction and meet the needs of every student is evident in her lessons. Cynthia is an active member of the Greenwood Lake School community and is often seen volunteering to participate in after-school events, clubs, and summer enrichment programs. She has worked with her colleagues to create continuity within the Spanish language program from K to 8. She designs individual lessons that focus on activities that will engage learners while reinforcing their fundamental Spanish language skills. You can see Miss Giordano's classroom expectations are clearly laid out, and her lessons have a clear objective directly aligned to her activities. Cynthia also supports our RTI, our Response to Intervention Program for grades 4 through 6, and has worked in the Summer Skill Builders Program. Cynthia is eager to learn new things through professional studies and is often seen collaborating with her colleagues to increase the rigor for her students. Cynthia enjoys utilizing technology in the classroom and has attended district offerings on technology tools along with consulting with her colleagues. She has attended Bosie's Conference on Targeting Language Studies and is focused on instilling those fundamental skills in her students. She's always willing to lend a hand, including offering translation services in the district when needed. Cynthia has also served as a club advisor for Girls on the Run Program, which undoubtedly has made a positive impact on those students involved in that program. It is my pleasure to also congratulate Cynthia Giordano on tenure. Austin Fraylor. Austin actually began his time in Greenwood Lake as a leave replacement. His demonstrated commitment in that position led to his hiring in his current position, and tonight we gather to celebrate and recognize his outstanding contributions. With an infectious enthusiasm for teaching and a genuine love for literature, Austin has created a classroom environment where students are not only encouraged to learn, but are inspired to explore, question, and grow. He has made it his mission to build meaningful relationships with his students. In addition, Austin also connects with students and serves as the modified basketball coach and modified track and field coach, where he brings the same positivity, dedication, and team spirit to the young athletes he works with. But what truly sets Austin apart is his unwavering positivity. No matter the challenge, Austin approaches each day with a smile, a kind word, and a can-do attitude. His positivity is contagious, spreading throughout our school and uplifting everyone he encounters. In addition to his exceptional teaching, Austin is a true team player. He's always willing to lend a helping hand, share insights, and collaborate with his colleagues. His contributions to our district data team have been invaluable. He approaches data analysis with the same enthusiasm and dedication he brings to his classroom, using it as a tool to enhance our educational strategies and improve student outcomes. His attendance and active participation at two national conferences has helped us make informed decisions that will benefit our entire district. Again, it is my pleasure to congratulate Austin Fraylor on his tenure.
Okay, congratulations, everybody. Moving along. Subject 7 dot 1. Privilege of the floor. So before we start, I'm just gonna read a quick statement here so that everybody understands the rules in case anybody's gonna get up and speak. So, "Public expression at meetings shall be encouraged, and the following guidelines are intended to promote an orderly procedure for public comment participation." "The public will be given the opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest and concern during the privilege of the floor section of each monthly regular board meeting. Anyone wishing to be heard must sign in on the public comment form prior to the start of the business meeting or before speaking." And the form is up at the podium. "Speakers will be asked to state their name before addressing their question or statement to the board." And just remember, even though you guys ask a question, we'll take the question down, but we will not answer that question tonight, okay? Speakers may be limited to three minutes each in their comments or questions. Speakers are to have the right to speak without interruption and to address the president of the board, which is me. My name is John Thurberg, for those who don't know me. Comments regarding specific personnel will be ruled out of order and referred to myself or the superintendent, and you'll be asked to stop speaking, and if we need to, we'll just stop the business meeting. Speakers will not be recognized for a second time until all who wish to speak have been given an opportunity. The board may suspend privilege of the floor if it is determined that continued discussion on a particular topic will prevent the board from completing its scheduled business or if one of the above guidelines are not adhered to and continued participation is deemed to be disruptive. So, privilege of the floor.
Good evening. I am Deanna Tramarkey, I am an elementary school teacher, and I am an elementary unit rep. As the 2023, as the 2023-24 school year comes to an end, I would like to inform you of some of my concerns.
It's not on, probably not turned on.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Do you want me to start again?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm Deanna Tramarkey, I am an elementary school teacher, and I am the elementary unit rep. As the 2023-24 school year comes to an end, I would like to inform you of some of my concerns and reflections. First and foremost, I am concerned for the students, their families, and teachers who have experienced repeated patterns concerning class size. As an example, our current second grade consists of 23 students, and right now there are three sections. In three sections, these students have thrived this year both academically and behaviorally. This group was in two sections previously in first grade. When they were in two sections last year, many were below grade level. There were many gaps in their learning and many challenges with their behaviors. When this class was in two sections, it became a all-hands-on-deck situation, pulling the staff from different assignments, hiring different and additional interventionists to fill the learning gaps and help with these challenges. Many interventions were put into place this year to foster their learning. This was successful because of the three sections and hard work and dedication of our teachers and staff. With all the improvements this group of students has made this year in three sections, it is beyond baffling to us that they are slated to return to two sections once again for third grade. We believe that Greenwood Lake is unique, and it has the resources to provide small class sizes, especially in grades K and 3, where learning to read is of the utmost importance. This idea of three sections should be highly considered for the middle school students in grades 4 through 6 as well. The teachers and staff here in Greenwood Lake work hard, we collect a lot of data, and we use that data to advocate for decisions just like this. However, we feel that our professional opinions and expertise aren't even considered when making decisions such as these. Because of these lingering frustrations and seeing these patterns and decisions repeat time after time, it has really created a building with low morale where teachers feel unappreciated, unsupported, and unrecognized. We're in the trenches every day, and we know what our students need the best. We are asking that old Superintendent Hadden and the Board of Education to please highly consider providing three sections consistently for each grade. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Hadden. My name is Erin Campion, and I have been teaching in Greenwood Lake for 18 years. In addition, I am a member of the GLTA Executive Committee. I'm here tonight to speak about the current 4th grade class and how important it is that the class be divided into three sections moving to 5th grade. I would like to go back to October 2023, when the GLTA sent several emails regarding the current 4th grade. The letter addressed the social, emotional, and educational needs of our students. The GLTA presented data such as math results, SRIs, and classroom grade level curriculum that showed almost 50% of the class was reading and writing below grade level. In addition, only 19 of the 43 students scored at grade level for math, leaving just about 50% below grade level. Need I remind you that this class was most impacted by school closures and the combination of remote and in-person instruction? Their second grade year had them pushed into two sections. Many of them returning to school for the first time since the fall semester of kindergarten. The needs of these children, social and emotional, in addition to educational, were so great that all available teachers, including special area teachers, were involved in providing intensive instruction in order to bring them closer to the second grade standards. As a result of their needs, we're separated into three sections of 3rd grade the next year. Additionally, the special education needs for this group were considerable. If we, the educators, reach out to you, imploring you to help us with a class setup that was proven to not be in the best interest of our students, why didn't you intervene and help support our students for the best outcome? These students were put into two sections when both building principals, our curriculum director, and our head of special education, our curriculum coach, and teachers from both buildings thought it would be a disservice to do so. I ask you tonight, how is this allowed to happen? In our attempt to connect the situation, the GLTA asked to meet with you in order to develop a plan to address the needs of these students. Why didn't it happen? How come we do not have full transparency here? What recourse does Greenwood Lake Teachers Association have if the very people we work for don't regard our professional opinions? We are the experts in the classrooms. Our opinion and our recommendations should matter. As many of you and students in the district know, 5th grade is one of the biggest transitional years. The leave and curriculum is challenging, even for those performing on grade level. To address their needs and to continue to close the gaps, these students show we are recommending that the incoming 5th grade be split into three sections. And fortunately for us, we have the teachers available to make that happen. And furthermore, as we attempt to create the class list for next year, you should know that we have an abundance of behavioral issues, as well as the requests from parents to separate their child from other children in the grade. This is becoming nothing short of impossible. The only solution is to make three sections. I hope by speaking tonight, my professional viewpoint will be strongly considered. Thank you for your time.
I don't really need the lights, I'm first, yeah, loud, thank you. My name is Jane Letty, I've been in this district for 30. I do, yeah. My name is Jane Letty, I've been in this district for 35 years, and I teach 6th grade math along with my companions here and Mr. Malone, who was not able to be present. We're hoping that the 5th grade, the current 5th grade, that is in three sections, is moving forward in three sections. This year, we had a group of 43 students who were in two sections, and it did not work. As of today, 37% of those students are on probation or ineligible. It's disgraceful. That doesn't make us feel like we had a successful year. The year, the year would have worked better if those students had been divided into three sections so that we were able to better address their needs. There were so many behavioral needs. They were in the office more than they were in the classroom. I'm sorry. One thing this district, as long as I have been here, has prided itself on is small class size. Everyone knows small classes are better than larger ones. You develop relationships with students in that small momentary home room period in the morning. You make connections with people. Without connections, nothing works. An 18 to 1 ratio has always been the golden ratio. Anything above that is not acceptable. It will allow us to address not only behavioral, the emotional, the social, the instructional, the organizational skills of these children than to have three sections. Keeping the grade levels will allow the teachers much more time to focus on the student needs, eliminating a lot of the students who are ending up in an RTI class. I teach 6th grade, I teach 4th grade RTI, I teach 5th grade RTI. I see it every day of my life. 6th grade specifically is the gateway to the middle school experience of 7th and 8th grade. 7th and 8th grade is always three sections. 6th grade is in that wing. We need to satisfactorily transition those kids to three sections. 6th grade, they're together, we can even modify that more so that as they move forward, they are with different people. Some of these students who are higher academically have been in this classroom with these students who are not performing up to par from K through 6. I'm asking you, my cohorts are asking you, to please consider keeping it, I don't know what the plan is, but to please keep it in three sections. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jessica Collin, and I've been teaching in the district for seven years. And while I am up here alone, I do speak for a lot of teachers. So to reference a recent SNL skit that COVID broke something that we can't fix when discussing student behaviors, while they were joking, I actually think they were on to something, except we as a district share some of that blame. COVID quickly and drastically changed the landscape of the education world, and we haven't recovered from that way of thinking. COVID broke something in our inability as a district to hold students accountable, not only for their behavior, but also their effort, homework, classwork, and attendance. We have many students with more than 20 absences and or tardies. We have many students failing a minimum of one subject area. We have a handful of students failing all of their core subjects, and I think we can all agree student behaviors aren't so great either. Despite these major concerns, we have eliminated almost all consequences these students might have received. By allowing these students to move on to the next grade without any additional work or effort, we are teaching our students that they don't have to try, don't have to put in any effort all year, and don't have to show up because the next grade is waiting for them. Let's think about that for a minute, about those students as we send them on to high school. Think of that student as a young adult in college or a professional in the workplace. Would you employ someone who doesn't complete their responsibilities? Someone who is late or absent more than they are at work? What about the person who shows up every day but never lifts a finger to help while everyone arouses to the occasion? I think whether we're willing to admit it or not, we know that this employee wouldn't last longer than a week. Our job in the district, no matter the position we hold, is to create an environment where students can learn the core subjects, but also that empathy, critical thinking, problem solving, creativity, communication, and social emotional skills. Additionally, we try to instill ethics, values, and other skills to create well-rounded citizens who can and do contribute to our society. Based on how things have been going, or students are not ready, it is our job as a district to do something now before it is too late. I know an issue such as this one seems insurmountable, but there are things we can do to start going in the right direction. Paraphrasing what someone once told me is never bring a problem to the table without suggesting a solution. What I propose is we consider reinstating a true summer school program. This means mandatory full day, full summer week, which we know doesn't include Fridays, where students can make up everything they missed and learn the topics they missed. My solution also entails releasing the dates to summer school while in advance and ensuring that parents know and understand that if their child does not attend, that they cannot move on. Included in this idea would be the continuation and discussion with the Academic Eligibility Committee that was started over the summer that has a really good base for what, you know, to leap off of from there. I urge you to consider what I brought up tonight as we are quickly watching these issues grow larger and larger in our district, and I would be happy to discuss this further with you should you have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Crystal Navy, for those of you who don't know me. I grew up as a Laker, I married a Laker, and I'm now raising two children as Lakers. My husband and I chose to raise our children here because of the top-notch education we received, as well as the values, the smaller class sizes, and a close-knit community that comes with it. Our oldest child will be entering into fifth grade in the middle school this coming fall. We all know that the biggest leap in curriculum comes in fifth grade. I am saddened to learn that the students will likely fall into two sections again this upcoming year. Last year, as parents, we voiced our concerns to the board and the superintendent, and we were reassured that our students would be pulled out for leave, extra help, and it wouldn't impact the students being in two sections. Well, this year proved that we need to revisit that plan and make some changes. As you are aware, these students began their educational journey during the COVID pandemic and have never really recovered from it. Although COVID itself isn't a huge medical threat right now, as a parent, I can tell you it had a great impact on their educational, social, and emotional needs. Our students were separated into two separate classes in the past when there were additional resources for them available in the district. As evidenced by test scores, this was not the best decision for the students in this upcoming school year that they are being stripped of these resources that they need and very much deserve full-time, not just here and there throughout the day. Why are smaller class sizes where students can thrive on a more personal level and receive more resources and individualized instruction being taken away from them? This class, more than any other class, deserves the attention with the wonderful teachers that the school district already has in place, full-time. It would be a complete disservice to separate them into two sections again. I believe this matter is of the utmost importance and is deserving of consideration. I urge you to review their test scores, review their social and emotional needs, and speak to their previous teachers and the parents, and consider not allowing the class of 2032 to slip through the cracks again.
Hi, my name is Francesca Ruiz. I have four students in the school district, but I am here about the fourth grade. I'm going to keep this short because I feel the teachers have all said everything that needs to be said about the need for three sections. I have read your six goals that you envisioned as award. As you begin to make your decisions about next year, I hope that you really believe that each goal is met for each student, especially number six, which is continue with the pursuit of excellence in education for all students of the Grimmer Lake School District, because our fourth grade needs three sections. These students are falling behind academically and behaviorally. And this is just, I don't have this written down, but as a parent and as someone who works with these students, I can see it from both ends, as a parent and as someone who works with them, and I see what their behavior is like, and they deserve more help than they're getting, not even academically, but socially, behaviorally. They really need a lot more time spent on them, teaching them how to be the best students they could be in and out of the classroom. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I know I just spoke, but I have a letter that's on behalf of another parent, and I'd love to read that on their behalf, they couldn't attend tonight.
You can submit it and we'll read it.
I can't read it.
It's not your, yeah, I mean, it's not officially your statement, so I don't know if it's actually.
I have a signed statement from her.
Yeah, I mean, you can submit it to this.
Unfortunately.
Hello, I am Laura Crowell. I've waited twenty-eight years to come and talk to you. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the privilege of the floor, having been in the district for twenty-eight years. With the first year working through BOSI's as shared services, I've been fortunate to work with an incredible staff. I was welcomed to the district, given guidance, developed working relationships that helped me make my program successful and helped other people with theirs. To this day, I'm grateful that a number of staff who offered a chaperone or choral trip to Albany for a nationally recognized program, Music in Our Schools Month. There, we not only perform a full concert program, but we have the opportunity to explore the history of New York in the museum, and equally important is the opportunity to meet the government officials who represent this district as they come to hear us every year. It is a good thing for the school that we remind them of who we are. This year, the students were even quite surprised to find out about my upcoming retirement. One Senator Schufus's aide announced it, congratulated me, and was completely unaware that it was out of common knowledge at that time. I have always made my position as music teacher my number-one priority in the district with the students, the family, and staff. I've done my very best to meet the educational needs while also guaranteeing mutual respect and trust. After all, that is the only way we can reach our goals successfully. My other responsibility is towards my union. At the retirement of our previous grievance writer, I was asked to step into her position, and I did. And she reminded me that the grievance writer is not always the favorite role, simply because they're responsible for addressing potential contract violations and issues that are relevant to the union. In that time, I filled the role. Most of our grievances are addressed in a comfortable timeframe. They're written in the hand and the words of the superintendent, and most importantly, we have tried to maintain a professional relationship that continues with the GLTA and the district, understanding that it is simply a part of the process and nothing personal. Over the past few years, we've had a few issues with the way the grievances have been handled. We were getting verbal responses at one point, and so we started to request them written. While we started getting them requested written, because that is the proper format through NISA, to have all grievances requested in a written manner, it started to appear that it was being written in a kind of legal means. It might not have set out to sound condescending or dismissive or even complicated, but it has started to appear to be just that. So it's clear that somebody who is well-versed in legal opinion is actually the writer of the grievances, when all we really want is just a response to move forward and understand that this is never anything personal. This is how our current situation is right now. We have passionate teachers here and staff who believe in the school, the students, and this community. As a unit, we are requesting to be heard by our administration and our board of board of ed, and we will in turn do the same. You send your children to us every day, fully believing in the staff and trusting we will put our best foot over to ensure their success. We are respectfully requesting an open and transparent working relationship. It is imperative to change the current climate within the staff and the buildings, which as a unit currently recognizes themselves as undervalued. As a retiring teacher, I look forward to a time where I can meet with all of you, any of you, at any convenience of yours for a proper exit interview. Personally, I cannot begin to express my gratitude for the opportunities I've had to work here with the staff, past and present. They've truly supported my program, and I've tried to do the same for them. There are so many great programs and events that come from these staff on a daily basis. You should be aware of all the things that occur here in each building and don't make the pages of the social media of the school. Thank you.
Anybody else before we start the business going back up? Thank you, everybody that spoke. And well noted. Okay, moving along. Subject eight dot one. May I please get a motion to accept the results of the 2024-2025 Annual Budget Vote and Election as presented? Aaron, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot one. May I please get a motion to approve the May 2024 financial report as presented at this meeting? Mike, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot two. May I please get a motion to approve the transfer funds for the middle school milk cooler as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot three. May I please get a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Board of Education meeting calendar and approve the date of the organizational meeting as presented? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot one. May I please get a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute health service agreements as presented? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot five. May I please get a motion to approve the QBE insurance corp as the student accident insurance carrier as presented? Michelle, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot five. May I please get a motion to approve Rockland BOSI's cooperative energy purchasing and services as presented? Dave, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot two. May I please get a motion to approve the one-time purchase appropriation transfer as presented? Mike, Ian, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot eight. May I please get a motion to reclassify BOSI's appropriations as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot nine. May I please get a motion to approve the continuation of reserve funds as presented? Aaron, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot ten. Did I miss one? No, I got that, because I marked it up here. Okay, sorry about that. Nine dot ten. May I please get a motion to approve the appropriation of funds for the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot eleven. May I please get a motion to approve the appropriation of the fund to the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve Fund as presented? Dave, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot twelve. May I please get a motion to approve the appropriation of funds to the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve Fund as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? I don't know, one should be the, I think the wording wrong. This one, sorry, nine dot twelve should be a motion to approve the Debt Services Reserve Fund as presented. Mike? Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot thirteen. May I please get a motion to accept the generous donation from Joan Finn for the John P. Finn Award as presented? Dave, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much for the donation. Subject ten dot one. May I please get a motion to appoint Kristen Santopietro as elementary teacher as presented? Mike, Ian, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject ten dot two. May I please get a motion to approve Nadja Ro as music and chorus teacher as presented? Michelle, Ian, any discussion? Thank you for attending tonight. Congratulations. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject ten dot three. May I please get a motion to appoint Michael Lepresty and Christopher Ferry as videographers for the school year as presented? Patty, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? As long as the mics keep working, we're fine. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject ten dot four. May I please get a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Kevin Flynn as presented? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject ten dot five. May I please get a motion to appoint Walton Landre as school bus driver as presented? Aaron, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject eleven dot one. May I please get a motion to accept the CPSE and CSE recommendations as presented at this meeting? Mike, Michelle, any discussions? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject twelve dot one. May I please get a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding negotiations pursuant to the Taylor Law involving the GLTA SRP Union, and no action will be taken after executive session? Dave, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending.